Oh, we're all good?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Welcome, everybody, to the public work session on Wednesday, November 3rd, 2021. We reopened upstairs, so we're just gonna come get right into it. Before we move forward on any of the items on the agenda, I'd like to introduce, if the camera will pan their way, representatives from Lambornaski, who are the firm that we just hired at our last board of ed meeting. Eugene and Mara are here to represent the firm, and they will be with us at our meetings on a regular basis and helping us get through some of the hurdles that we have been discovering.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here.
Welcome. Okay. We'll open right up, go right into the public work session. We're gonna discuss the policies. The policy committee has been meeting, talking about different policies, but this meeting, we'd like to talk about the creation of an advisory committee to contribute to the review of Policy 6480. We had talked about that in a committee meeting. Mr. Bartels, Mary Lou Celberti, Christine Ferenzani, and myself. Christine, you wanna speak to it a little bit?
I think we were, the discussion we had in the policy meeting was to create an overall conflicts of interest policy that relates to all the facets, tutoring, and music instruction, and coaching, et cetera. And one of the things we had looked into was whether or not we needed an advisory committee, and we felt that perhaps there should be an advisory committee that was broad-based, that included parents and stakeholders from different organizations, including PTA members, and we had come up with a list of the various people and groups that we would ask to be participating in this overall advisory.
We had talked about making it a smaller committee than what 6480 was last year. Some of the participants was a principal, a coach, a music teacher, a regular ed teacher, a special ed teacher, two parents, our two directors, Brian Zouar, Carol Rosetto, two board members, which, as it stands now, that would be myself and Erica that would serve on this committee. Anybody have any thoughts?
Go ahead. Overall question. We've done this already, exactly to the T. One year ago, we had Brian Zouar vet this policy outside of committee, Frank Van Zant outside of committee, Carol Rosetto in committee, two principals, four coaches, four parents, two board members, two principals, two booster club presidents. We're revisiting this for what reason? And doing it the exact same manner that we've done this before, one year later after this policy passed four to one. We decided that we would let the policy ride out after it was approved four to one, and that if there was a problem with the policy, then we would return to it to decide what was going wrong. The problem with the policy is that the board circumvented the policy, and we didn't adhere to it anyway. So we put it in place, and the board circumvented the policy. We currently have 150, I went through the entire policy manual, 150 policies that have not been reviewed since 2002. Another 108 policies that have not been looked at in over 10 years. We have new council here. We had said that we were gonna have them do a comprehensive look at all of our policies, and yet this policy committee, the self-selected policy committee, has decided that the policy that, I'm still gonna finish what I'm gonna say, a policy that went through various stages and vetting over a full year of work needs to be reopened. Why? It's a question.
Because there is a problem with the way the board feels about it, the way the community feels about it.
Some on the board, some on the board.
Some of the board. And if I could just follow up with Mrs. Hackett's comments, I have a broader comment and question. When we discussed this two public works, our last public work session, two meetings ago, it was my understanding that we were overhauling the entire way that we do things, involving board committees, what was necessary, what was required, what was not required. All of that was discussed. I asked for that to be brought up at this next meeting, and the only thing that is on our agenda tonight is 6480, which the other policies are not even here. So doesn't it make logical sense to first that what we're going to be having committees for, what we're not gonna be having committees for, what is required, what is not required, before we're jumping back into this policy that we've worked over a year, like Mrs. Hackett said, on? And it just seems short-sighted and single-focused, and I'm very unclear as to why, the broader policy and structure of the way we are going to operate as a board, which I've been asking for since the reorg meeting, is not being discussed first.
The overall decision with regard to how the committees were going to be formed, we discussed, Mr. Bartels, myself, and Ms. Rocher, that we needed to discuss that with council because of the different kinds of committees that we had, ad hoc and otherwise. The policy that's being reviewed here is not just 6480. I don't know why that appears on there. However, what we decided was that we needed an overhaul of the conflict of interest policy. And the way this policy came about was basically through sports and an athletic advisory committee. The policy treats tutoring and other areas completely differently than it treats coaches.
But they were vetted through our union president and his team, and Dr. Zouar, so nobody was cut out of that. The core issue at the time was athletics, and that is why the athletics advisory also looked at their piece of the policy. So to be correct, they only focused on their piece of the pie. And the other people looked at their piece of the pie, and together, and vetted through Ingraham and Smith, we went through a full process of creating that policy. And I will remind everybody that at the time we were doing 6480, two months before that, we were also looking at our conflict of interest policy. If there's a conversation that wants to be had about combining them, again, is that the priority of this board at this time? This has been a complete, at this point, waste of time and energy and funds. I can't even stress how costly this issue has become, and this board is refusing to move forward.
No, what the prior board did was not address conflicts of interest broadly. What he did was create a committee, and the committee met, and the committee was a sports committee, and it was filled with coaches and booster club people who made a policy that was worse than the original policy that we had, and it didn't fix.
That's your opinion.
And my opinion is shared by several other people in this.
Right. So when you say "we decided," it's the policy committee bringing it to the full board, is my, let's stick to process and procedure, because that's what we need to focus on, in my opinion, right?
That's what we decided. In the policy committee meeting.
But when you're saying "we decided," are you, we decided to bring it to and write this discussion right now?
Right. We decided that we needed an overall conflict of interest policy that actually addresses the conflicts that we have. The conflicts haven't been fixed here, which is why we've been in the problem that we've been in for the last year.
No, that's not the reason why we're stuck in where we are. The problem is that we have fundamentally something wrong with the priorities of the majority of this board right now.
Well, you.
We are in a superintendent search. We have had a myriad of issues related to this that started two years ago, and we have committed time and again to be moving forward. And what you're suggesting, with a policy manual taller than I am, and I know I'm not tall, but it's big, that we are going to revisit something that's been closed out one year ago, over all the other things that haven't been touched in almost 20 years.
We went over several policies at the first meeting and reported at the last meeting that there were policies that we went over that did not need to be revamped.
Did you vet 258 of them?
That's an impossible, that's.
We also, but we also asked Mrs. Celberti to go back and to find, we wanted to discuss with you, council, a procedure of going through our entire manual. This is what we discussed at the last public work session. So I'm just unclear as to why, when all of that was discussed, that this is the only focal point tonight.
Because this was the first time that council was here, we had discussed going over with council. They have not absorbed our policy manual. This is the first time they've been.
Of course they have, but out of every policy. But instead of talking right now about a process to put that in place and to have that conversation, we're having this conversation again.
We were having a conversation about something that was never rectified.
No, that's your opinion.
But this also isn't rectified.
That's your, that's an opinion.
I'm just saying, I think this needs to be rectified, my opinion, this needs to be rectified first. What process and procedure are we going to use to review all policy before we single one out that has been vetted within the last year? That's my opinion.
We are now bringing two new people to the table, and we're having two members of the board lead them onto what believe the priority is. We don't agree on the priority.
We've never said anything about the content of a policy or how it would change. We're just bringing up a, we're bringing up the issue to form a committee to look at this. We've never said that, we've never inferred that what we want to do or anything like that.
John, you haven't answered my question. What do you think is different about what you are proposing versus what has been done? What is different about that advisory committee?
A different board sitting.
Right. You want a different answer. That's what it is. You're looking for different people to give a different answer.
I'm not looking for anybody to give anything.
Nobody in this community has come out in leaps and bounds since that policy closed in a year.
Oh, you're wrong. That's your opinion also.
No, that's not an opinion.
That's your opinion.
Nobody's come to this board. That's a fact. What, we had four or five letters? That's not the same thing.
We've had a ton of information come in. There's no point in going back and forth about that.
If we're talking about official board information and board conversation, not conversations people are having in private that are not shared with everybody, you cannot determine what the priority of the board is without having this conversation.
We've had tons of letters when the situation rewrote.
Is it, is it that what we're having? We're having a conversation?
We are having a conversation, but we're being led to feel that these people who have put themselves on the policy committee have now chosen what the priority of this is going to become. And I'm telling you that not all board members agree that that needs to be vetted.
I understand, but as a member of the board, the majority of the board moves the board forward. We're not putting anybody there, we're not, we're gonna, the union will pick the teachers or whoever it wants to go, the principals' union will pick the principal. We're not, we're not saying it's gonna be this person, that person, this person. We believe that there needs to be a relook at the code of ethics for tutoring, music, and sports.
Why are we repeating a process that we've done within a year? What is the purpose of repeating down to the T the exact process that we have put in place?
Because the process didn't fix the issue, which is why we continue to have the issues that we have.
We don't have an issue. Our athletes are flourishing, our teams are dominating, our art students are phenomenal. There's no problem here.
The issue has nothing to do with that.
We have single-issue candidates that got on the board. That's our problem.
That is not the problem.
That's wrong.
There is an overall conflict.
All right, let's.
If I can, can I just interject? I do agree with Ms. Barry that we really should sit down and think about how we review policy and come up with a, review that policy, come up with a legitimate plan to do so. With regards to Policy 6480, the one issue that I see with it, and I did intimate this to you, Ms. Hackett, when we spoke when I had first joined the board, is my main problem with it is that it seems like we have different rules for different people. And as a Board of Education member, as a union member myself, that's the part that I have an issue with, what the right answer is and what it should say. I don't know what it should say. But the fact that there's different rules for different members of our staff is the problematic piece for me, just speaking for myself. But it probably would behoove us to start with what policy, what are, I'm sorry, I have like noble cat hair tonight, what our method for reviewing policy will be, and then if Policy 6480 is at the top of the list, then that can be a first-reviewed policy. I mean, I've never done this before, but a process would be good, and then targeting the policies that need to be reviewed, because there are quite a few that are old, as Ms. Hackett said. There's a lot that needs to be reviewed, and I agree 6480 is one of them.
So the process is typically, the policy's brought up at a board meeting, and then it is looked at by board members, but because this policy was formed by members of the community also, the, so not to cut them out or make it that much different, we are reaching, we wanted to reach, we thought we would reach out to the public, bring some people in and talk about the policy. Then that policy that would then be presented at a Board of Education meeting, and the members of the Board of Education would have the opportunity to say to, "I don't like that. Can we change that word there? Can we do that?"
So I would like.
You're shaking your head at me, Tara.
Because this was on the board agenda for over a year, and the public had those opportunities that entire time. So I just want to be clear that it's not as if the board and this private committee weighed in on this committee and that's how it was formed. The public had so many ample opportunities to be part of it.
I never said that.
But this is just going back to my original question. Why are we spending so much more time and energy going backwards where we committed to moving forward? We're reopening and relitigating processes and problems that people perceive exist because it's a problem for them. And I think.
That's not true. The problem remains, and if it didn't remain, we wouldn't be in the situation that we're in now.
What situation are we in now? What situation are we in now? The situation that we're in now is that we have a board that's not moving forward, and we have bigger fish to fry.
We have a board that the majority is not agreeing with you, and that seems to be the problem.
No, no. The problem is that the majority of the board is not representing the majority of the community. That's our problem.
That's not the case.
That is the case.
Well, how can you, how can you say that we're not moving forward when we're trying to see if we need to improve this policy?
Because the policy is approved a year ago, four to one, and nobody since it's closed out has been hemming and hawing at us every week, saying reopen this policy, what's wrong with you? Something's failed, something's wrong. I have been here, and I have not seen that happening.
That's not true. We got a ton of letters about the situation.
We've got some letters, and we've gotten letters on the other side, which I know some people like to completely ignore. But there's always two sides of an issue, and that's fair. And we know that there's people that are gonna feel both ways. That's fair. But the fact that this board is deciding that this is a priority, I don't agree with.
I think the overall conflict of interest within the district is a priority. The main conflict of interest policy has not been looked at, and this policy that was created treats people completely differently depending on what they're doing. And it didn't solve the issue of conflict of interest. We still had conflict of interest.
So the board decided just to circumvent it when they had the chance?
No.
So the policy really doesn't, isn't holding enough water?
What the board decided to do was fix what was broken so that we can do the right thing by the end.
There's so many opinions here versus facts, and I'm just pointing back to the facts that we have done this exact thing that you are advising or recommending within a year. It's a waste of our time. We have spent way too much time and energy and money.
That's your opinion.
In this district on this issue.
That's your opinion.
That is, that is not an opinion. Mr. Bartels, I don't want to put him on the spot, but if I ask how much money we've spent related to soccer since this started in 2019, our taxpayers would not be happy.
Maybe if the policy was fixed, we wouldn't have had to spend any time on policy.
That is not what it's about.
Two years ago, if the policy that we had in place was followed, we wouldn't have to do this. That's not the issue.
No, we have, we have bigger problems than that, much bigger.
Any guidance?
Well, I'm obviously a newcomer here, and I don't have the depth of knowledge that you're talking about. I'm picking it up on the fly, and I don't want to render legal opinions other than executive session without a waiver of privilege by the board, but the following observations. Does your existing policy, which I haven't studied cover to cover, have a policy on the review of policies? Some school districts do have a procedure embedded in the policy book itself as to how you, A, review policy.
Yep.
And B, form committees.
Yes, we have a policy on policy, which was also reopened last year, and we had agreed to the process. We made sure that there were certain amount of regular board meetings so that parents had the amount of time, fair enough time, to look at things. We extended that. But our main part of our policy is that it's the board's responsibility to keep its written policies up to date, so they can be used consistently. And the superintendent also has the right to call to the board's attention any policies that are out of date or for other reasons that need revision. We have not been given that directive from Mr. Bartels nor Mr. Chang before that this policy needed to be reopened.
Mr. Bartels was in the meeting for the policy with us, and we had this discussion, which is why we decided to.
So let's let him speak for himself.
All right. So, yes, I was part of the policy committee, and it's the purview of the board to choose, you know, which policies they want to review. My recommendation at the meeting was that we have, if we're gonna review this, that we need to have a committee to review it, and it needs to be representative of, you know, many different facets of the district.
Right, because you're trying to not let people make those decisions without the impact of a committee, and I understand that, but.
That's, you're really accusing improper behavior of us by trying to make people not do the wrong thing. So I really, I really take offense to your lines there. And I can, I know that when we have approved the final version of policies, redistricting was on, we told the public, this is not made, this is not written in stone. We can review this as early as next year. So to say that just because we looked at this last year, it has to be this way for a certain amount of time, is wrong. That's wrong of you to say something.
That's not the reason why I think that that's not purposeful. It's that there's not a reason to reopen it at this time. That's something I don't think we all agree on.
But, Tara.
And I think to Mrs. Barry's point.
You have this problem. We are a Board of Education, five people strong. We take a vote. When three of the five vote for something, that's the way the district is going to go. And you keep fighting that and making your opinion known that you're against.
I'm not fighting it, John, but this is the first opportunity. We've had an opportunity to even see how the three of us feel outside of the policy committee, okay? So I'm getting a little tired of being told "we" before I've even had an opportunity to render my decision.
Christine didn't say "we" meaning you. She said the policy committee talked about this.
Okay, so now this is the opportunity.
She didn't even say that this was, this was the way we were gonna do it. We're presenting at a public work session on, on a suggestion that we had at the committee meeting.
And it sounds to me like the majority of the people here right now are asking that we look at the policies on the whole first.
We all agree on that. That's what we wanted to do the first time. The point of it was that we needed to determine what committees are required under the law, and they're operational, and we have to have them. And we looked into those, and Mary Lou pulled some of those. We needed advice from council. We were going to have a further conversation with council at a later date. This is the first time they're here. Mary Lou is not here tonight, she's someplace else. So we don't have that part tonight. And the reason we don't have it is not that we weren't planning on doing it, it's simply that it's a work in progress. We had made determinations on a list over what policies were ad hoc, what policies were standing, what committees were standing. There are several committees that are standing committees that we don't even have that we're supposed to have.
So where is that lie right now? And when will the rest of the board be advised of that?
We had to finish the list.
The attorneys have to.
We didn't finish it, and we have to go over it with the attorney.
Hopefully, they'll give us guidance on what we have to have, what we don't have to have, and what, we have committees that we've looked at that aren't really operating in the right function on, you know, in the school district. And those are on our, you know, on our reorg sheets and things like that. So we, we will work with the attorneys on that. We all will, because it's gonna be something that we're all gonna have to say.
I know, that's why I'm just following up, because I've been asking since July 1st where we are in the process, and thank you for answering. That's my question.
We just hired the attorneys last week.
I am well aware of that, and they should also be aware that we changed to a committee structure last year, which we had never done before, that in terms of operational committee from the board, and now we're changing back as per our reorg meeting. And I've been asking as to what new committees are going to be, and what we need and what we don't need, so this has been an ongoing conversation since July 1.
And a big factor in the committee structure was the superintendent last year.
Right.
Mr. Bartels feels differently about that. He feels differently about those.
But this is a good place to have that conversation.
Oh, yeah.
With all of us here. So I think it's important for everyone to hear that.
But with all due respect, you can't expect us to know all of this when on the agenda, the official agenda.
Exactly.
Only the thing that pops up there is this advisory for this one particular thing. That is suspect to me, that now we can talk about all the things that really were talked about, but that the first thing brought up in the policy committee report to us is this, 6480. This is what ends up on the agenda.
Christine reported last week.
So this is why we're asking the question.
I reported at the last meeting about all the things that we just discussed now.
I'm talking about this agenda.
And it's still a work in progress.
Yeah, but you're saying this is the first time we're talking about committees, and it's not true at all.
No, 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 no. I'm saying you have all of these other things you're purporting that you are going to focus on as part of policy, yet the one thing that showed up on the agenda and was brought up this evening was 6480. That's all I'm pointing out. So I think if we can all agree that now that we have two new people joining us here, if we could take a comprehensive look, like we all committed to do, and if that rises to the top, then that's fine. But for a policy committee made up of two board members to determine what the priority of the board is.
Again, again, again.
Just feels wrong.
And you, you, last year, as president, you sanctioned committee meetings of two board members all year long, and that's what you based your, you know, your.
And you and I were on that athletics committee together, John, and we voted.
And I disagreed with many of the.
And you voted four to one on that committee. You passed the policy.
But I.
You passed the policy. I'm just gonna remind you.
All right. I passed the policy, but I feel different now, so that's, that's fine. I don't, because I made a vote last year, doesn't mean I don't, my mind can't get changed. People can't, you know, people can't convince me of different things? You're making it seem like we cannot look at this because it was done a year ago, and that's not the right, that's not, that's not the right thing to do for the people of the community.
So going back to process and procedure, is it fair to say that at any point, any board member can ask to pull a policy and have it reviewed?
That's in our policy.
As opposed to it coming through the policy committee? I just want to make sure we all are.
Yeah, I'm assuming that, I'm assuming we may not have a policy committee. Once we, once we figure out the right way, we're gonna move forward.
So I would repeat my request to pull the policy on policy, to pull the policy on committees, and vet those first. That's my request.
One recommendation is if you could provide us with a copy of the committees that the district has, and we could opine to you as to whether they're legally required. We could also opine whether it's a committee that, you know, we see in other districts. So like, for instance, the policy committee is not legally required, however, it is a committee that most school districts do have.
The other observation I have, if you were looking at a wholesale revision or review and revision of your entire policy book, there are various services that could assist you in that regard, whether it be NISBA.
They use Erie One.
Or Erie One Bosse's, and Mara, in fact, is a policy maven, and in COMAC, over the past, what, year and a half, two years, has been a part of the legal review from the policy committee assisted by those vendors, I guess it was.
It was Erie One Bosse's as well.
Erie One Bosse's, and we got it done. So, but it's a Herculean task.
Yes, understood.
You shouldn't think this is gonna happen overnight.
Understood. Just, I just want the process and the procedure to be clear for all, and I think it's an important starting point before we jump into any specific committee or policy revision.
Yeah, having, you know, doing it in the past, you know, for those who recently, you know, having a plan of, you know, where you want to go and where you want to get to, you know, really does help. You know, what we did in COMAC is we did, we pulled groups, and we said, you know, we were on this meeting, we were gonna talk about these, and this meeting, they were gonna talk about these. They did put together a policy committee for the first time, and they did it that way. The whole board was on it, so, but it was just, so the focus was on policies. And then I had reviewed them to make sure that, from a legal standpoint, that was okay. And then we had asked the district administration to review it to make sure that practice was what the policy says, because a policy is only as good as, you know, what be happening. So if a policy says do this, and the district is doing that, you know, again, there's no one that's gonna come out and slap you on the wrist, but you want to make sure that what the district is actually doing is legal, because we find that the policy is legal, but that's not what's actually being happened. It's actually being happened, it could be also legal but just different, or it could be not legal.
And the last comment I have, as I just recalled, I have another district embarking right now in this very same process, and they're, and Mara's intimately involved in that, and one of the methodologies to consider is I think what they're doing in terms of And one of the methodologies you can consider is I think what they're doing in terms of prioritizing is going oldest first. In other words, presumably if something was reviewed in 2012, you know, if there's something, you know, predates the ADA or something, you may have to take a look at it, you know.
That makes sense. Thank you.
So how will you approach this? We'll send you...
So if you send us a list of, I think there's kind of two things going on here. There's the committees and then the policies. So with regards to the committees, I think if whoever you think is appropriate to send us a list of all the acting committees, you know, one, we could depine which ones, you know, require or not.
Yeah, I'll work with Mary Lou on that. Get that to the attorneys.
And then with regard to the policies, your policy book is on the website. I could review and see if any of the policies stand out as, you know, things that maybe from, and from my view, it was more like timing and, you know, knowing things. Like special ed policies, if those policies are old, they probably are not legally accurate just because there has been so much change in the special ed. And the other piece is we may want to find out is Erie One Boses, they usually provide updates. So they will provide, or here's the updates. And that's always a good starting point. It's not the end all be all, but that is a good starting point. So, you know, we may want to look at, and I could see...
We've been using them for a number of years now.
And they come in with legal, like the...
Yep.
Yeah, so any, any... You have to legally change this, that, this and that.
Yeah, any specific legal changes for the last quite a few years, Erie One, we've been following Erie One Boses and putting them into our procedures as they go through.
Good.
Yeah, and that was helpful. The full board reviewed it in public together. We made changes, you know, through a series of meetings. So it was very helpful.
So I'll go through the policies and see if anything kind of stands out to me. You know, most, from that kind of review and not having the, really, the date is going to be one of the main things. But most likely, the ones that are older are the ones that are going to probably need more attention. Again, it's probably not a situation that the district is doing what the policy says. They're probably up to date and doing it correctly. We want to make sure the policy is accurate and reflects what we're actually doing. And special ed's a good example.
And the other thing we'll do is we'll look at our client memos. You know, there's a couple of things in the past two years, well, more than that. Like, for example, educational 2D, protection of personal identifiable information and, you know, the technology and the cyber attacks and all that. You know, that's a hot item.
All right. So that's our starting point. Anything else? Anybody else on the policies? Covered? You good? All right. Discussion on communication, district communications. I think we've all been advocating for some type of communication director, communication person. I don't recall if everybody felt this way, but I know that I've been advocating for someone to sit in, sit in a chair in the office. So they're here, not in California or Florida or wherever, reaching out and trying to get help from them. I think it would be beneficial to us. We've gone the route from last year from using consultants from out of state. That was what we were told was the only thing that was really available or that would work for us. I'd love for us to try and search out some firms, get some pricing, and see how we, if we'd be comfortable with that. That's just my opinion. I don't know how everybody else feels.
I think overall, we need to make a lot of changes to our website and social media and make it just more accessible and available to people and have it be organized in a way where parents can access the information under tabs. Looked at a few different websites for different districts and some of them were organized very well. So maybe we could benefit from something like that so that if you're looking to find information as a parent or group, you can go on and actually locate what you're looking for. A lot of our things need to be updated. I know Ms. Love has been doing a great job trying to update a lot of her area. And it's important that we communicate properly. And Mr. Bartels has been doing a great job writing letters and being very responsive to people. And we appreciate it. But I think we do need someone to deal with the communication to make sure that we are properly communicating and getting our information out and that it's available on the website.
Yeah, we actually had a meeting yesterday with Mike Anderson, Director of Technology. And we do have a website refresh in process, which hopefully will be released shortly. That will limit the number of clicks that you have to take to get to a certain page, give a little bit different look of the overall website. It's not a, it's not a new website. It's just kind of a refresh on the old one. But I agree, I think we need to go to that extra step and completely revitalize the entire website. We need to look at our overall communications. So it's not just the website and the social media, but it's the school channel, it's the TV studio. It's making sure somebody, we have somebody who kind of can direct and control that entire, entire process because they become disjointed. So, for example, back to the website, we have one webmaster for the entire district-wide website and then we have one each for each of our individual buildings. But, you know, as we go through it, we find different things are outdated from time to time. We have to keep, kind of go back and check in with those individual, you know, webmasters and say, okay, we got to update this. This is old information. We need somebody to look at everything on an ongoing basis, you know, so that we keep everything up to date. You know, we've talked about this in the past and we try to do it. We try to, you know, we go through this little process of updating everything. We do it, and then a year later, we have to go through the same process again. So we need, I think, one person overseeing all that stuff. So, and I agree, I think that person has to be in the building. It's not, it's not something you can do from outside.
Except for in California, you have to wait till three hours for that to go.
Mr. Bartels, is school messenger in, on that list as well? Or is that, because I would like that to be looked at too. I don't know if we are under contract with them or...
Yeah, we, well, that's what we use right now. But we have had issues with those and we are continuing to look at that as well.
Thank you.
So we currently have somebody from Core who works full-time in our office and he's working on some of these things. We had talked about hiring somebody like a communications director when we had hired Mr. Chang. We had, what we were told and understood was that we actually had to go through civil service to hire a new position into the district and then hopefully find somebody with that skill set. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So is there a possibility? So we ended up using this consultant outside. That was the route that we went. The money that we were spending for that can now be allocated somewhere else. Is the possibility of opening up a position like that? Because firms are great, but I do like the fact of having somebody here that's living our day-to-day and is kind of understanding our superintendent voice and helping with those sorts of things on the ground. So just curious if that's maybe something we could think about for the budget season and talk about maybe opening up another position for that.
Yes, I believe we do have the money, as you mentioned, for that consultant that we're not using, no longer using. And so I think we do have enough money in the budget to cover for that position. It's just a matter of finding the right person. So whether we go through civil service or we find a separate service, as you know, we've done a number through Core, there may be another position we could get through that organization or a different organization, somebody through Boses, for example. So we have to look at the different options and what will best fit our needs. But, yeah, I think we're, we definitely need to get somebody in there.
So when other districts have hired, say, a consultant to come in, an organization or an agency to help design an accessible website and an overall, I guess, organization of all of these different things that we use, we can't do that. We have to go through civil service for that. Or the person who would be here as the director employed by the district would have to go through civil service and you can use an agency.
No, you can use an agency to do something like that, to redesign the website and go through that process. If we're hiring an individual, we're kind of limited. If we're putting that person on payroll, the person has to be either certified or through civil service. So to go through that process, you have competitive jobs and non-competitive jobs in civil service. For something like this position, it's a competitive job. We've looked at the different pieces. A non-competitive position, we could pretty much almost hire anybody. But for a lot of these skilled positions, you have to go through civil service and go through their position list and, you know, exhaust that list before you can go outside. And there are people on that civil service list. When we went through it, nobody really came to our attention as somebody that we really wanted, which is why we went outside to the consultant. And that's, that's what we would have to do for you. So if you don't go, if you don't put the person on payroll, you can then go through another organization such as Core, which we get through Boses or go through Boses directly for another service.
Could we do both? Could we have an agency come in, design the website, organize, create something that we like as a product for parents to be able to access, overhaul our system, and then hire someone in-house who's trained in that to then keep it up?
So maybe for next meeting, we could have some recommendations?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we've already started that, that process and looking for somebody.
Thank you.
Ms. Love, can I ask one thing? I know that you're, on the front of the site, it says you're in construction. People have been calling and asking for the contact information for our Northwell Health Service. Could you add that while it's still in construction? Is that a possibility? I looked, I looked yesterday. What was that?
I think when something was being updated as part of the refresh for it, it was not there, but I do believe it's there.
Okay.
Now, it was just, it was like a 24-hour thing. But that's actually the only information that's there right now while this website's being updated, which it should be up within the next day or two. It's just being proofread right now, but it's there.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Anything else on communication? Erica?
No, really, just the only thing is once, you know, we do make the go-ahead to reconsider what our website looks, is going to look like or will include, just maybe considering, asking for input from, you know, the community members, from teachers, from staff, just as to what, what they want out of the website as the forward-facing piece. What would the old website worked well for them? What didn't work well for them? So what we should kind of stop doing and start doing? Because they will be the primary user of the website. That would just really be my only request, if we could somehow kind of infuse...
Well, we can add, we can put that item for discussion on a board meeting and ask for input from that.
Yeah, just into consideration as we design for the public. That's it.
Mr. Bartels, could you give us the update on the winter concerts?
Sure. At the last board meeting, we talked about beginning the process of reviewing, you know, what we would be doing at our winter concerts for audiences. The first issue we had was to make sure students were going to be live. So we said that at the last meeting, all of our concerts, students will all be live. There's not going to be any recording of students. It's going to be put together. So then we had a little discussion about audience vaccinations and so forth. I've been working with Dr. Zouar, going through the different concerts that we have coming up. And we believe the best course of action at this point is to allow each student to have two guests at each concert. So that way, we'll, we know exactly what the total number of people are that will be at each concert so we can appropriately organize and socially distance. We plan to have a vaccinated section and an unvaccinated section. People would have to show proof of vaccination to sit in the vaccinated section. And in that section, we would not require any social distancing. We would ask people to distance if they could, depending on the space available, but we wouldn't require any, any specific distancing. In the unvaccinated area, so whether somebody's vaccinated and doesn't want to show us that they're vaccinated, somebody that's vaccinated that comes in with a child who may not be vaccinated or people who are just not vaccinated, would sit in an unvaccinated section. And in that section, each family group would sit at least six feet or three chairs apart to make sure we have the six-foot distancing. And the whole reasoning behind that goes to contact tracing. So it's, it's been recommended that, it's a requirement that everybody wear masks. By the way, so as we're wearing masks here, anybody coming to the concert, whether vaccinated or unvaccinated, it's going to be required to wear a mask. So that's, that's the requirement that we have. The recommendations are for six feet between adults. So we'll try to maintain that as we can, but it's a recommendation, not a requirement. The reason for the recommendation is because if you have unvaccinated individuals less than six feet from each other, they're going to get quarantined if they happen to be contact traced because of a positive circumstance. So that's why we're kind of trying to set it up in this way. We have the middle school drama is actually coming up in the next week and Dr. Zouar is working it out with them. He actually doesn't have a limitation on them because typically the attendance is much smaller at that event. But he is breaking it up into a vaccinated section and unvaccinated section. So we'll have a good idea of any issues that we may have going into the concert season. So I think that would be a good practice case to see what happens so that all the other concerts will flow smoothly. So we shouldn't have any issues. So even if, you know, they get full attendance that they expect at this middle school program, everybody can sit six feet apart. So we should be in good shape there. The other thing we've done for all of the concerts, all the elementary concerts, will be at either the middle school or the high school. So there won't be any, any concerts in their own buildings and that's to accommodate the numbers of people and give us plenty of room to maximize that space and socially distance. Each of the elementary, from what I understand now from Dr. Zouar, each of the elementary and middle school concerts will be livestreamed with one exception. Watson and Hewitt are on the same night. So we can only, because we only have one YouTube channel, we can only livestream one of them at a time. So we'll have to decide which one of those will livestream. The other one would be recorded. They'll all be recorded, so anybody can see them, you know, at any time. But we want to try to livestream as, as much as we can. And then the two high school concerts, I don't believe are planned on being livestreamed. I believe they're just going to be taped, recorded, as they have been in the past.
Thank you very much. It's a lot of work. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you and Dr. Zouar for all the work.
I think that's it.
That's great.
I think the public is going to be thrilled.
Yeah, Brian's done a lot of work on this. I really appreciate everything that he's, he's put in. And Stephanie Xanthus, also his secretary, they've done a great job in coordinating this, looking at all the seating, coming up with the numbers and making sure that all this will work out. Appreciate that from him.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the testing update.
So last year's three-day testing results were released last week after being embargoed for a short time. Now, with these results, the state did add a disclaimer this year that due to the large number of students that did not take the test, these results should not be compared statewide or to last year's because the data is so skewed. So that being said, we do want to present the results that we did have on the exams. Dr. Sempino?
Hi, thank you.
Yes, you are. Thank.
Thank you very much. Last spring, New York State requested a testing waiver. They were trying to determine if the results were not successful or if they were in the way to alter the process. So this is happening from New York State State Ed. Can I post this? Is your hand camming?
To the same, Jeanie.
Jeanie's works.
Hello? Okay. Thank you. Sorry about that. Thank you, Mr. Bartels. Thank you, Board of Education. Last spring, as you know, it was, been a crazy two years. New York State did request a testing waiver. They were concerned that the assessments could not be safely and fairly administered to all students across the state. Many students were still on remote and quarantined. This is from the New York State Education Department. It's actually on the website and there's a link to the website there with all the information. And they're basically saying that only about 40% of the students' results were available. They ask that these are not representative of the state's student population and the results should not be compared statewide. They also say that the school district's results should not be representative of the school or the district's student population. And just a reminder, only one, Book One of the assessments were administered. So we had a lot happening last year. Because we don't have state data to compare it to, we just basically have the percentage of levels three and four and the percent of students not tested. And if you notice, as we go, we have grade three at 87%, grade four at 90%, grade five at 76%. But you also notice as the grades increase, we are, number of students not tested also increases. You're going to notice that as we go, go ahead. Want to click on math? So as you see, grade three, 91%, 89%, 79%. And as you see, it gets a little, our number of students not tested increases again. And here we see our middle school. We have grade six at 77%, level three and four, 71%, 76%. And by the time eighth grade, we see 80% of the students were not tested. In our math, we have 53%, 58%. In our eighth grade, we do not have data, but if you look on that site, sometimes the main website, you might see one student, that's an outer district. We have outer district in the main. So, this is taken just from the middle school site. Science, grade four, we had 99% with levels three and four, and we had 36% not tested. This is the last year, just since we're talking about testing, of grade four science. There'll be no science test next June. And then the spring of 2024 is the first administration of the new elementary science test in grade five. And then in grade eight, our students take their science regions. So, that, New York State, that's really a summative assessment, kind of to summarize what's happened at the end of the year. We use, and we've been using it, oh my goodness, I think since we piloted it in 2009, the NWEA, the Northwest Evaluation Association, the map assessment K through eight in our district. We've used it for quite some time, and I have put a link on here. And I'll put this on the website, and I don't know if our Winzuli one is there, but we'll put that on too. We'll kind of refresh as we go, right, Mr. Bartels?
Sure.
And this is our NWEA data, so if we click. This is our spring results, so since we did, took the New York State assessments in spring, we're showing you the NWEA for reading and math in spring. We are still above the means in reading, grades three through five, which is very good. We were a little worried with the math. We are above the means in math, grade three to five. We're above the mean in reading in grade six and seven, and we dipped in grade eight. Now, those are the same 80% who didn't take the other state test. And we also noticed, when we were looking at the data, we actually had less students take the exam in the spring. And we were trying to think about last spring, and that's when we were all back. And if you recall, spring sports started around that time, and some people were staying home. We had a lot of people kind of afraid, because they wanted to play sports, and they were staying home. So, I was speaking to Ms. McGinn, and we were thinking that although we would love people to read more, middle school, do you hear me? We want you to read, pick up a good book. But overall, we went down to RIT points, not terrible, but we want to bring them up. And then in math, we are above the mean. And that is probably the fastest three-through-eight presentation you will get from me, just because we really don't have much to compare it to, and they're saying, we didn't even have regional data to, to compare it to. So, that's where we are with New York State. Questions?
Could you just talk a little bit about NWEA and, you know, what those comparisons are for?
Mr. Duffy and I will actually be presenting the NWEA in two weeks. But the comparisons to, those comparisons are national norms. They're not New York State, they're national norms. So, we'll talk a little bit about that in two weeks. We'll also go over how to read the parent report. I'm, yep, still talking. You're gonna, I feel like I'm a, you're gonna get sick of me. Anybody have any questions?
I think the presentation on NWEA will be really helpful for parents, just to understand how to interpret the data and how, how you, the school district, uses the data to inform instruction with each individual child. So, I'm looking forward to that presentation. Thank you.
Well, we're looking forward to doing it, and we have the wonderful Mr. Duffy coming with me. And it's nice, because that's formative. We get that right away. We're actually talking about that data with teachers now, which is great, and seeing where children are, where they need to be. And our teachers are working really hard. Our kids are working really hard. So, we're getting there.
Dr. Sempino, would you say it's fair, outside of kids who are quarantined or not in the building, that basically, everybody's taking the NWEA, that there's no students opting out in any sort of numbers?
We have a few that do.
Okay.
And we have, you know, there's still a stigma to testing. Assessment's not a bad thing. We want, we want to gauge where the kids are. We want to help them. It's okay. If kids don't do well on a test, this is one moment in time, both of these. You know, that's why you do multiple measures of assessment, because we want to see how kids are doing. We want to have classroom assessment. We want to have formal. We want to have informal assessment. We want to see how they're answering on quizzes, and also in classroom, how they're participating in group work. So, it's all pieces of the puzzle to make, you know, to make sure that children are getting what they need. In visiting the buildings, Ms. Love and Ms. Hood and I have been visiting all the buildings, having wonderful conversations with teachers. They're saying, kids are reading. What they're not doing, eye contact, stamina, sitting in their chairs. It's that kind of thing. So, we're really, it's, it's, we're getting there, and teachers are just enjoying the back-to-normal. Other questions?
I've got a question. With, with this data, these assessments, how does the district use this data?
We don't use the state data as much. Historically, we've had very high opt-out rates in the district. So, I could go back, actually, I found an article in Newsday that listed, you know, the refusal rates. And ours have been historically very high. 2019 ELA, we had 54.6% refusal in ELA, 47.10 in math. That was actually a good year. We actually, we had a few, we have a trend of more people taking math than ELA. Math is a shorter exam. ELA is quite long, and that was interesting. 2018, we had 59% of our kids not take the ELA, and 53.20 not take the math. In 2017, 61.7 did not take ELA, and 48.2 didn't take the math. So, we traditionally were still, as you saw, in the middle school, like, if you didn't take the tests, they're still really not taking the tests. We do see an uptick in the elementary students. But, because the, there's so much going on, there wasn't a lot of hoopla about it. And I think parents are having their children take it. We'll see what happens. It's their choice. We're just gonna, we're gonna offer it and see how kids do.
It's still a choice. I personally think it's a good idea for them to take it. By not taking it, there, there's really no other option for them. They end up kind of sitting in an auditorium, being given some small assignments, but there's no real instruction going on. So, I think a better use of the time is for them to take the exam with the rest of the students taking the exam.
I'm sorry, which one are you talking about? Which exam?
All of them.
Okay.
All of them, the three, the three-day testing. So, because we've had the opt-out rates, and as Dr. Sempino said, it looks like we're seeing a little uptick at the elementary level. Some more students are taking them. In the middle school, we still have very high opt-outs for, compared to other districts. So, I think it would be a good idea for our students to take them. It's, it's another exam they need to sit for. That's true. Sometimes they're long. But, you know, they continue to sit for exams all the way through high school, and they're going to have to sit through them for college. And it provides us with another means of assessment for each student. So, as they go through, they take the exams, we do have different things we can look at on those exams that maybe we see something else that we need to focus on for a particular student. So, it's just another way to evaluate, evaluate each, each student as they're moving through.
That was kind of my question. For the students who do take the exam, so for the 53% or so this year that took it, what do we do with those results for those students? Like, how are we using that data specifically?
So, what we could do, so in the past, when we actually graded the assessments, it was, the good thing about that is, we actually saw trends in writing, and there was no writing on this section. So, it was typically just Book One. Same with math. You could see the thought processes of where, where the child went wrong, and especially in the short answer, the constructed response pieces. So, that was always interesting to see. And then, did they ask a question differently? Did the state ask a question differently than maybe our program, or, you know? And then, do we say, wow, that's a good way of asking it? We could spiral that in, and we have those kind of discussions. This year, it's a little different. What we will do this year, since we just, they just got released, is we could, we could, with our data warehouse and BOSI's, we could list all the students and who took the NWEA, and then the ones who took the state assessment, put their scores next to see the correlation. And that's always interesting. We'd always do that when we got them earlier. It's just, everything is pushed back so much. And again, people are kind of like moving forward at this point, like, it's already November. So, this is like old data, not that it's, completely disregard it, but the, you know, like, there's a lot of question with this, because of the construct validity, meaning like, you can't really compare it to last year. They actually, there's a lot of kind of hoopla going around, and, you know, my groups, you know, the assistant superintendents, because it was very, they actually have a scale score, but they're, they're saying, don't compare it, but they actually gave you a scale score, so there's a little controversy there. And we do hope the state has a cleaner testing program, because it's, again, it's another way of looking at things. And they measure things that the NWEA doesn't, like the writing. And we do like to see the writing. That's always great. It's great to see the children progress, how they start formulaic, and then how they develop their paragraphs and things like that. So, that's always interesting.
Do we ever use the state assessment scores three through eight to inform placement AIS? Or do we generally use the NWEA?
We use a combination, again, like, because our opt-out rates were so high, I usually put them side-by-side, so they could see where the children fall, and even the projected proficiency based on the NWEA. And also, to really place an AIS, we also use, again, multiple measures. We use running records, QRIs. We do have a math intervention program now called Bridges, so that's also very helpful. We have the extra, thank you to the extra math AIS teacher. I cannot tell you how wonderful that's been. They've been at all our grade-level meetings. And again, they're, they're in the buildings to support the teacher assistants and the teachers, and those students in making strides. So, that's been fantastic.
The only other question I had was, for Regents exams, I know that they were optional last year. Have we received any of the data back yet for students who took, who opted to take those exams?
I would have to look. We had very few numbers of children who took it. I think in the middle school, there were five. So, we'll, we'll, we'll have to look at that. But I can tell you, historically, our students who took the Regents in eighth grade did very well. We've had above a 90% passing rate for many, many years. In 2018, 19, we had a 94% passing rate, and the Region had an 85%, and that includes the ninth graders. So, that's, you know, our kids are, they're, they're doing well, and, yeah. We can keep supporting them and getting to where they need to be.
Dr. Sempino, I know it used to be mandatory, if you had, say, a low two on the state assessment, that you were mandatory AIS. Is that still the case, or has that changed with the fact that they weren't administered and all the different rules?
Yeah, they're, they're basically saying, don't use this, so we're using others. But it, you know, it's interesting to see where the kids felt, you know, fall. Again, it's the one book, which that's why they're saying, don't use it. So, we're using NWEA, we're using QRIs, we're using running records. We have plenty of things, foundations, benchmark assessments. And, and again, the, the children, I just, everybody read at home. Like, you people, parents always ask, what's something I can do? What's something I can do? Get a book, a good book, and read, because it really does help with the vocabulary, their writing, their stamina, even to sit with you, and you'll see. I'm, you know, like, and I listen, my own son, I'm yelling, read, you know? But it, it does help, and we definitely see, you see the summer slide. They don't want to read over the summer. They came off of COVID, and they wanted to just play. I don't blame them. But it was, we really need to get them, that stamina is important, to sit and be on task and write, actually write, instead of using a, you know, an iPad. And that's, that's interesting, too. So, they're working on it. They're doing paragraphs. Even that, you know, in the past, you know, fifth grader saying, wow, we're working on a paragraph. But that one paragraph will turn into a, you know, a five paragraph essay, you know, three paragraphs. So, we'll get them there. And hopefully, this year, with all the students being back.
And hopefully, this year, with all of the students being back in the buildings, we can really dig into, like, some of the questions that you mentioned. How do we use the, the data, using it to inform instruction, and pulling out information from data warehouse, looking at the WASSA reports, looking at the gap analysis, and seeing where those areas, those deficiencies are? And really having those conversations with teachers, so that we can really make informed decisions. And like Dr. Sempino mentioned, I know there's going to be an NWEA presentation later this month. But that is one data point that we use to monitor and chart progress and growth for our students. And now that, you know, we're kind of setting the, making a clean slate with students being back in, we can resume some normalcy and engage in some of the practices and do what we do, in terms of really digging into the data and making those informed decisions, and getting the students where we want them to be, dealing with them where they are, and then taking them where we need them to be.
Yeah, I think these are, these are great conversations. I think, starting with the NWEA, the next meeting will be great. I also look forward to some other presentations during the year. We can bring in Ms. McGinn and Mr. Murphy to talk about the programs in their buildings, and just have a good discussion about how we kind of progress through. So, we'll start with NWEA, and then we'll kind of move on from that. So, I think, I think we'll have some good discussions about that.
One of the things that was brought up at our, at the special ed meeting that I attended with Ms. Messier was the efficacy of the co-seeding model for the Regents and the IB at the high school, and whether or not we could possibly get some feedback from the students who've participated in it, knowing that, you know, data is going to be difficult, because we just instituted it right before COVID. Then it was COVID, but some parents had brought up that as an issue, that maybe we could take some feedback from students to see if they believed that it was working, or what the issues were, what the successes were with that program, since it was new right before we had COVID.
Mm-hmm. Sure. Definitely take a look at that.
I think that, I think that would be very important. I don't believe we ever really fully reviewed the data from that program, from when we switched over, refused back.
No, I don't believe we have.
Everything changed, and things changed, and I don't think we got to that point. So, I think it will be very important for us to see how that works.
I know, another thing apparent brought up, there was a lot of, there are districts that do AP and IB co-seeding, but I don't know if there is any, or if we know of any other district who does the model that we are doing with Regents and IB in the same co-seated classroom, and whether or not there's, what the data is on that, and the other districts, if it's working, what we could do to be better, or if it's working, how, how well it's working.
I was also wondering, too, I mean, along kind of talking about what NWA, A, NWEA is, I'm wondering if it might also be worthwhile talking a little bit more about what the state assessments are, what the purpose of the state assessments are, and how the state assessment has kind of evolved, the purpose behind it in the last few years. I know that there was a lot of pushback from the state assessment when it was attached to APPR scores, and that's when we started to see a lot of people begin to opt out of the exam. It no longer does that, and it really does provide a good deal of data to assess not only our students, but also our programs. So, if we continue to have that high opt-out rate, that's one piece of data that our district can't, although we have a decent sample size, it's not a full sample size. So, we're not getting as much out of that as we could be. And I think, looking at how our students are doing, because the assessment itself really does measure, when we talk about proficiency, we're, we're saying, has your child met the standards of the class? That's what proficiency is, mastery, being that they are above and beyond those standards. Some of our elementary parents who have their first children in school might not understand what it means and why the exams are important, you know, for their kids, but also for the district as well. Just kind of reopening that conversation to move away from, like, the taboo of the state assessment might be worth doing. All around, just a thought.
I agree. That's, that's. No, I was going to say, that's why I was saying before, I think that it's much better off if we, if we can get the kids in there and reduce our opt-out rates, because I do think that's, that's important as well.
Good at education for the parents as well, as to why, why they really do matter.
So, we really haven't gotten any information on the new tests yet. You know, we haven't gotten any information really on upcoming assessments yet. So, that will be interesting when that comes out. We only pretty much have the dates that are available. But the other thing to remember here, and just, you know, historically, and I'm just saying this because historically, we never really teach to the test. Our end goal has always been, we backwards-plan from the algebra, you know, from the algebra Regents, and we really try to backwards-plan into sixth, seventh grade, how students could best meet, pass algebra, and then it opens the gates for the higher-level courses in the high school. So, I'm just, you know, giving you a historical perspective on that. So, where another district might have a higher proficiency in grade seven, our proficiency, our passing rate in algebra is very high. And in fact, other data that, you know, parents don't see is, you know, we have, over, like, in 2018, 19, we had over 90% of our students go into the high school with three and four credits. And, and again, I know Mr. Bartels had spoken to Ms. McGinn about sharing some of the things that are happening at the middle school level, and Mr. Murphy at the high school level, to really kind of explain, you know, where we were, you know, in a historical perspective of getting kids into those higher, giving kids more opportunities in those higher-level courses. So, I just wanted to kind of throw that out there.
No, I agree. I think it's, it's great. The more students who, who can prove mastery at the middle level, that we can get into those upper-level classes, the better. It's just the students who aren't scoring proficient that my concern is, but that's kind of a separate conversation, I think. I just meant more for really trying to.
I just meant more for really trying to, to have parents be informed as to how.
Not such a microphone tonight.
Just, just that like the purpose behind the exam has shifted a lot and a lot of that negative connotation that was once associated with the exam really isn't there as much. Certainly they can choose to opt out for it. Just as to educate.
That's all we have on the agenda. I'd like just to bring up a few things and anybody else can bring up if they have any new business. Mary Lou asked me to speak to the board about if we're, if we're willing or wanting to do open house in December or stay in this room. And, you know, just have some, talk a little conversation behind our masks. I don't know how the board feels about that. Can we just get a sampling of what everybody's thinking?
I like it better in this room. I think it's crammed in the boardroom. I would love to be able to host something. We didn't get to do that last year.
Do you good?
Yeah.
I agree.
So Mary Lou, when you watch this. I've had a lot of questions about the physics teacher who's, you know, are replacing the physics teacher who's in our district that Mr. Bartels.
Sure. We've had the one teacher who's been out. This is the third week they've been out. They will not be coming back. So we're in the process of finding a replacement for that teacher. As luck would have it, we were able to find somebody. Mr. Murphy has met with him and vetted him out with his staff. I believe he's a very qualified candidate. He comes from the city. He's actually on an unpaid leave from the city because he has declined to be vaccinated. So that's why he's not working there. So he's willing to come work with us and he knows he has to get tested on a weekly basis. So he is fine with that. He's just has no plans to get vaccinated. So he's ready to go on Monday. So assuming everything goes well with the interview tomorrow, we will have somebody in place on Monday. He's taught physics for five years in the city, not IB physics, but he's taught higher level physics. And we believe that he'll be able to fill in and adequately prepare the students. So there will be a catch-up period. So it'll be about three weeks worth of material that they're really going to have to catch up on by the end of the school year. I know some students are concerned about some of the midterm exams. Students are not going to be penalized if they're kind of matching themselves up with students in another class, you know, with another teacher. They're not going to be penalized for that though. That will be taken into account as we go through. The students in the meantime have been working with instructional videos that were put together by Mary Coleman and Tom Hessel. So they've been great in helping out and kind of popping into the class just to make sure kids are, are moving forward and at least getting some sort of instruction. But it's, it has been definitely lacking in the last couple of weeks as it would with any sub. We have had that issue in the past where we've had a couple of weeks, a teacher's been out and we've kind of had to fill in with subs and some additional help, but it never had been, you know, forecasted for the balance of the year. So that's why this issue is, is very much different. But they have plans to utilize things like zero period, common free periods during the day, providing additional after-school support, whatever they need to do to help the kids get through for the end of the year. But they feel getting the kid to catch up through the end of the school year between now and then, they should be able to catch them up slowly, maybe a little at a time.
And it's a, it's a hard time of the year for seniors and I, you know, I know that Mr. Murphy is making the accommodations, but I hope that the, the students and the families know that they have the support and the backing of everybody in the building to make it all work out for their, you know, for what they have to do for college work and things like that. Anybody have anything?
Can we talk about a conversation that's going around about moving our meetings to a different place? I just would like to render an opinion that we've come a long way in modernizing and I think the live streaming of our meetings has helped our parents and community be involved and informed. And I really don't want to see us go backwards and move to a place where we don't do that. You know, as evidenced by Mr. Bartels and Dr. Zouar's plan for concerts, I think that our, our purpose is to offer more opportunities for people to be part of our community, not less. So I really just want to render an opinion that I think we should continue to do that. We can have a roundtable discussion just like this, have the opportunity for people to attend and still have the opportunity for live streaming. We have the technology in place. Mr. Kroger is our, our man. So I would just like to ask that we continue to do that.
Maybe we should inform the reasoning as to the requests. We should have a conversation here about that, the thought process behind changing it back to, I think, not the boardroom anymore, this room, but live streaming or not live streaming. So can we just understand the thought process as to the proposal not to livestream?
We've been, we've been talking about it for quite a, quite a while. And the thought was to go back into the boardroom because we, you know, we seem to get so much more work done there, talking, talking things out. But in this past week, we found that we really need to give more room for the public if they wanted to come. We would have that, the public work session in this meet, in this room, in this forum. Recording was done so we can have, you know, I guess a little, the conversations we had might be less formal for the, for, to, you know, to present to the public, something like we used to do in the boardroom at the, at the administration building. But we'll listen to everybody's take on it.
I'm okay for the public work session, either live streaming or not live streaming, whatever the other board members say, as long as it's in this room. I think it's important just so that everyone knows the location. And I think it's important to have this conversation right now in public so the public understands why we're having this conversation initially.
Yeah, I actually spoke to the PTA this morning, the PTA council. I just wanted to let you know that I think just about every one of them wanted to maintain the online, the live streaming of this. I thought it was very important to be able to access and be part of the meetings without having to actually be here. So they don't have an opportunity today to talk about that, but, you know, before we would have another meeting, they, they'll have an opportunity at the next regular meeting to voice their concerns, but I just wanted to raise that here also, just that they made me aware of that.
So perhaps we should make that an item for discussion for the next public regular meeting.
I, I don't really have an opinion either way about it being broadcast or not broadcast. I think when it came up in discussion, it was more about the way things used to be done. I wasn't here when public work sessions were done, not livestreamed. So I have no experience with it. I think part of, part of the issue became that having hard discussions about topics, people were feeling like they were in a fishbowl. And so a lot of things moved into executive session that I don't think were necessarily executive session topics. They're very limited topics that you talk about in executive session. And yet some things would, would cause people to be uncomfortable in a huge public setting. So I thought that the process was that if we did a work session like a lot of districts do, it could be more intimate. It's open, the doors open, it's not violating public meeting laws, but it's not on a, on a full stage like every meeting is where everyone is commenting. Not that people could not attend, they could, but work could get done where we could talk about things, much like we talked about tonight, test results, et cetera, and that everyone didn't feel like they were under the gun, so to speak, at a big meeting where sometimes questions are asked and people are put on the spot to answer the questions. So I think that was the thought process behind it. I don't think it was to exclude the public at all. It was just to see if work could get done on topics that are not executive and need to be discussed in an open forum, but maybe are not things that everything needs to be discussed in a widespread, open meeting with a huge full audience. That was the only thought process behind it. When it was brought up to go back to the way you used to do public work sessions, which like I said, that's a new animal for me.
Well, the live streaming began because of COVID and then I think the differentiation between the public work session and the regular meeting is an important conversation to have because some people might not understand the difference between the two. So I think it's, it's important to differentiate.
Even if we just take, for example, this evening's presentation, we were afforded an extra opportunity, an extra meeting to be able to have that sort of presentation where the public, even though the room is not packed with participants tonight, we don't know how many people right now, I haven't looked, are watching at home, still were able to see this live instead of revisiting it later. They can revisit it later as well. I like that, too. But I just feel like, again, in being in a modern approach, I think it offers us more opportunities to reach out to the public and to scale it back. I can't find the reason why I think that that would be a good idea. I can't see that there's a benefit to it, in my opinion. I think the benefit is keeping it the way we have been doing it, which is just to be more inclusive. You know, everybody wants to be transparent. This is the way we can be transparent. Everybody can observe all the conversations. And if we don't have an objection to keeping it going, I can't see why we would go back.
I don't have an objection one way or the other. Again, I wasn't here when you did public work sessions, not livestreamed. I think my, my only concern is that similar to what Mrs. Farazani said, that if we have to have those difficult conversations and that there are questions that personally that I would like to ask, I don't want those questions to put or make anybody feel like they're on the spot or that I am attacking them or that just what I'm asking is kind of above and beyond at the moment. It feels like when you're in a public work session, when you're in a small meeting, you can have more of those, I don't know, technical conversations. So just, I would just want to be mindful that we're putting ourselves in a position that we can have conversation, easy or difficult, and that everyone, you know, would feel comfortable participating in it. I completely agree. I think we should be as transparent as we possibly can be. I think the more that we can put out to the public that we, we put on the table, the better. I just don't know, you know, what the best forum for that is, if it's just come to the meeting and listen if you'd like to, or if we're recording it and then publishing it on the internet. So I'm, I'm really open to both. It's just whatever everyone's comfort level, I think, is where I would stand with my answer.
Could we ask our new attorneys an opinion?
Well, districts, I think many of them have embraced the technology and continue to use it because there are people that prefer not to attend. There are people have various degrees of apprehension regarding the pandemic and remain that way. So I think many of our districts are continuing to stream regardless of whether the meeting's in person or the forum in which it's conducted. So I just, I haven't done a formal survey of all of our clients, but I think more and more they are offering the live streaming to continue.
At this point, all of our clients are doing the live streaming. Legally, there's no requirement unless you are using it as a full Zoom meeting or, you know, pro virtual, but all of our clients are offering live stream, whether it's to provide parents, you know, to bring their kids to meetings or, you know, be able to participate in other ways. Some of our districts did it before COVID, so to be fair, you know, they are not looking to change it. Others just, you know, really started it from a COVID standpoint.
I'm sorry.
We have always televised our regular Board of Ed meetings. I mean, always for the past 11 or 12 years. So, but you're saying most of your clients do both meetings?
Well, many of our clients don't have, many clients do not have a workshop. And the only concern I've heard from the microphone from parents or whatever is there are people that are, how can I say, internet phobic. They don't want to be on camera and they don't want their children on camera because they fear once that's out there on the internet, it may be not a good thing for their child. So we have had in one of my districts, the opportunity for speakers, especially if they're accompanied by children, to turn the camera away so that their image does not appear because some parents are very, very concerned about where it might end up on the internet.
Yeah, we have another district that when the people are speaking, the camera, whether it's child or not child, you know, the person's voice would be there, but the camera does not, you know, focus to the person speaking, it's to the board.
As a follow-up to that, you said, correct me if I'm wrong, that some of your client districts do not have work sessions, they just have regular, what we would call our regular meetings.
Yes.
So do they then have their meetings once a month, those districts, and they just lump everything together or? Because we typically have most months, two meetings.
You know, every district is different. I've been doing this for over 35 years and each district has its own culture and we will abide by yours. But, you know, some districts have one monthly meeting, some have two. Hopog, I can talk about this, public knowledge. Hopog has two business meetings generally. Some districts have workshops as needed. Compsog is almost your model. They have, they have a workshop proceeding. When I say proceeding, I'm trying to think, it's like the Tuesday, week, like it's like the Wednesday before the business meeting on Monday. And it's sort of, and they actually go through the agenda then for Monday in public and, you know, kind of ferret out issues that might arise and have, and have public comment. Some have public participation at both, some have only public participation at one. So it's up to you really. But, I mean, I think streaming, people appreciate that. I think people also appreciate the opportunity to appear in person. So I think the option is, is a good thing, but that's, that's what I see in the marketplace.
And some of the things that will happen with a school district who has one meeting per month, you know, at least a couple of months, they'll be at the special meeting because it just, the agenda kind of is going to get too unrally or things will happen or take place in the community that they'll feel, well, we need to speak about it now and not wait for the meeting in, you know, in three weeks.
Thank you.
Is there a way to stream the public work section but then not publish it to the internet so that people at home have the option to listen in? I mean, I don't know if there's a difference either way, but just kind of thinking of options to keep it inclusive, but maybe not as.
I think if we livestream it, we go, we go the full distance. We have it available to people and we commit that we're sharing.
You can't really restrict it because even if you say, all right, parent, here are the people that can participate, receive the live streams, nothing will stop any of those people, thousands to give it to their next door neighbor and do what they want with it.
How does everyone else?
Any reporting would be subject to FOIL and it would be releaseable on FOIL.
Newsday could get it.
We'll put it on for an item for discussion or do we want to make a determination?
I would like to see it as an item for discussion. I already stated that. That's my.
So that's what we'll do for our next meeting.
Does the administrative team have any preference either way or any members of the administrative team?
No, I think mostly the administrative team was not here during pre-COVID. Janine was in a couple of them, but not usually the one that's been there. It's just been our history. So, you know, history changes, you know, we evolve, we move with the times. So I do happen to think sometimes the discussions are more productive, as we've said, not in the fishbowl, but I also understand the need for the community to want to be a part of that and not necessarily have to be here. Something we've done for the last year. So if the community really wants that, I think maybe we keep that.
So we'll keep it for discussion. Anything that we have discussed in public works would typically be kind of re-presented at the next board meeting. So it's not that we never shared what we happened in the public work session with the public, even though public was invited, but rarely came. So, but we'll, we'll put it up for an item of discussion and see what the public has to say. And if anybody out there, I mean, you can write to Board of Ed. If you don't want to come to that meeting and speak, you can, you know, send an email to the Board of Ed and, you know, we'll just, we'll put it, we'll put it in. an email to the Board of Ed and, you know, we'll just, we'll put it in a tally column or something to that effect.
I had one other question, just as an item. Just going back to sports, we did have a couple of parents write in about numbers of coaches designated to teams, and just kind of looking at equality amongst that. I don't know if we would be able to kind of take a look at how many kids are on each team. Maybe those numbers have changed, they've grown, they've diminished, and really just make sure that we have the appropriate number of coaching staff on staff for the numbers, but also for the complexity of each sport, just as they've grown. I don't know when the last time those numbers were assessed, but it might be something...
Well, it was definitely not last year because we didn't know what was going on until last month last year.
Yeah, just nice to look at, to just make sure that we do have an adequate number of coaches for the kids who are coming out.
Well, we can ask Carol Rosetto to come and...
Yeah, I think that would be a discussion with Ms. Rosetto to be there. I have had those discussions with her, and there's numerous different reasons why one team or one sport would need additional coaches. I know one of the ones that she's very concerned about is gymnastics, where there's only one coach, not a lot of participants, but it's a safety issue.
Yeah, and technical.
So, you know, you have to look at each sport individually, and if we're going to look at that, I think it needs to be in the context of a budget discussion as well.
Yeah.
So we could do that, you know, upcoming and talk about that. I think they'd love to have more assistants and more coaches going on, but it is going to be an impact on the budget, so we'll have to have that discussion.
How are those numbers determined? Are they determined based upon the number of participants? Are they determined on some other factor, Section 8? Do we know?
As far as the coaches or how they were determined, I really don't know that. It's some combination. It happened many, many years ago. We haven't changed it since I've been here, and I've been here 21 years. So the number of coaches in each particular sport has been the same. We've added a couple of sports and I think kind of one coach for each sport that we've added, but we haven't changed the number that we've had in the past. And I'm not sure how it was originally determined.
And is that the same for both coaches that are stipended and coaches that are volunteer? Because that was another thing parents brought up in letters, that there are many sports who have a number of volunteer coaches and some sports who don't.
Right. That's just a matter of who volunteers. I know we've had that question before. I know there's, we get quite a few volunteers for lacrosse, football, and basketball, who seem to be the big sports that we get the additional volunteers for, not too many for the other teams.
Thank you.
But there's no... Will we ask Carol at our next meeting?
Yeah. It's up to the individual people who want to volunteer, what they volunteer for. So we'd love to have more volunteer coaches in other sports. We just don't have the volunteers.
And another item for discussion that has been brought up by parents writing in and some other people is the fundraising in terms of the different sports, what fundraising is for, how the fundraising is used, and the, I guess, discrepancy between the different sports and what they fundraise for, how much they fundraise, and where those funds are being used.
Yeah, they're all accounted for as far as, you know, what they fundraise for and why each team does that. I think that's, we need Carol for that discussion.
Thank you.
Can we just quickly mention our sports playoffs? Have we got a list today?
We did, and I didn't open my...
I have it in front of me. Our girls varsity swimming had diving counties tonight and tomorrow county trials. Saturday boys varsity footballs in the quarterfinals, varsity cheer in the playoffs, girls varsity swimming again on Saturday county finals, girls varsity volleyball semifinals on Saturday, boys and girls varsity cross country on Saturdays as a state qualifiers, and our girls varsity soccer team, who just won the Nassau County champs last night, congratulations, goes to the Long Island championship on Saturday as well. So I figure we should take the chance to say congratulations to all of our athletes. That's an amazing playoff list, so...
Definitely, yes, definitely.
Awesome weekend ahead for our Cyclones.
It'll be very busy Saturday.
Coming off a year like last year, too, so it's...
The girls cross country team also won the county championship last Saturday. I was there, I saw the race. They looked outstanding, and they have a really nice chance of hopefully qualifying for the state meet. So good luck to them. We'll be cheering.
Yes, all the best. All right, any other business? We're good? You're good?
[inaudible]
Yeah, I know that. I do that. I'd just like to remind everybody, we're in the middle of our, not the middle, the beginning part of our superintendent search. Focus groups are happening. Surveys are out, and please participate. We want everybody to participate who can. We need your input. We want to find something, someone that fits all of our needs. So please help us.
They're going to have a forum Monday night, I believe? Am I correct?
The next one is...
Yes, Monday.
Yep.
Important date to...
30 to 9?
I don't know the time.
I think it's 7:30.
Oh, 7:30 to 9?
I think. It's 7:30 to 9 in the high school auditorium.
High school auditorium.
Okay. So come join. It'll be interesting. So, all right. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes as listed in the, as listed on the agenda?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to approve the financial reports as listed on the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to approve Board actions A through, sorry, flipping, A through O?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions?
I just wanted to say, a lot of these items are things that are normally done at our reorganization meeting in July, but with myself assuming the interim role middle of November and Ms. Lael coming back to replace me, we had to kind of reappoint a number of different positions. So that's the reason for those changes.
Mr. Bartel's, we're, I have one question. Who's going to do security now? Are you going to keep it that?
That'd be part of a budget discussion coming up.
Okay, all right.
You didn't want F shore?
That was one of the things that I looked at. All right. We did all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. I'd like to adjourn our meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for being out there. Looking forward to seeing you on the...
15th.
21st, right?
Same here.
Nope, I'm in October.
16th.
On the 16th, Tuesday the 16th. It's not a Thursday or Wednesday, it's a Tuesday this next meeting. So please join us. Thank you very much.